Let's call a meeting to order at 5:05. And the first item on the agenda is next steps on the Aquifer overlay district zones. Brad did a very good summary, which I think we could send to anybody who wants it, who didn't get it directly. And I don't know whether we need to read it. What he did is point out that the original Aqua for Protection Overlay District map was done for the for the 2006 and it's, I guess, not 100% clear whether it encompassed both the district wells and the department wells or not, but it appears that it had both. And I think, and then this was revised in 2007. And according to the notes that Kimberly sent from the 2007 town meeting presentation, it was because it had been discovered or it was, I guess, known that the water district wells were in rock, rather fragmented rock, but previously they hadn't had the hydrological study to know what the protection area for those should be. So the zones were revised to reflect that.
Judy, I can put this, I can share this, but I have, I have a one that includes questions and one that doesn't. Do you want the shorter one or the long one, just longer one displayed?
I guess the only one I have has questions, so.
Okay, there's a shorter one that's housing committee status, so.
Yeah, it's the other one.
Okay. See if I can do this. I think this is it.
I don't know that, yeah, if people want to read all the way through. The district, the district wells were decommissioned and abandoned in 2022 and and we voted to change the bylaw to remove references to those wells, but we did not change the Aqua for Overlay District for lack of information and for some desire to protect existing other wells in the area. We have been, in the meantime, researching the maps, which thanks to Wayne's help and Kimberly at Furcog's help, I gather we now have. So Wayne has indicated from the board that the commissioners are good to go back to the original water district zones. And if you'd like to elaborate on that, Wayne, or maybe I should finish, there is an issue with the backup well. And if that has to and whether additional protection might in the future be needed for the backup well. Wayne, would you like to explain more?
Well, we're, I don't know how it's um, the town's main well will supply the highest throughout the year for the town. But the water is that your backup well also does the same case, the main one goes down. And as it is now, the backup one doesn't, it's about half the size of the main well. So.
Wayne, you're breaking up.
So we're hoping, I mean, cost wise, we're hoping you can just take the six inch well that's down here now and we can go with something with a 12 inch well to match the metal we have.
You're still breaking up, Wayne, I think. Let me try and summarize. The backup well is at the current time not adequate to meet the required daily requirement if needed and you'd have, you're going to try testing to see if that can be done.
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, cost wise, what we're hoping to just replace the six inch well now with the 12 inch, but if they can allow that, we probably have to go searching for another spot to do well, which means.
Where is the backup well?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to say districts then.
Wait, this is John. Can I step in here? Can you hear, can people hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm John Luke and I'm water commissioner. And we've talked with us, Wayne and George and George and we've been looking at the system early and because doing a long range plan for it. And always really talking about the wells, there's two wells side by side down there. One is a smaller casing, it has less production capacity. And we need to increase our capacity to meet future demands and satisfy DEP minimums for ability to produce. So we're going to look at, right, next thing we look at is, let me take the six inch well, the smaller well, and redevelop it as a production well to meet the minimums we need to meet. So that's what we're looking at that. But how that impacts the wellhead, the source protection area in the zoning map is probably irrelevant at this point. That, you know, I come to town just four years ago, but from a drinking water background. And these protection areas, what you've got in this zone two is a hydrogeologic, hydrogeologically defined area. And if you pump a little more water out of those wells where we are, it's not going to change that. Shouldn't change it at all. If we went, if we went down there and dug another well, a third well and started pulling more water, that might be another story. Because DEP would probably require us to do a redelineation of the recharge area. But if we just redevelop the one well and make it a little bigger, it probably won't impact it at all. It's already in production. And, you know, and anyway, I guess what I, just to make sure I'm clear, when you talk about going back to the original map that was in the Aqua Protection, you know, bylaw when it was put in place, I'm looking at one that I think Wayne gave you that comes from Franklin County regional governments and it shows the, all those little, those areas very clearly and you can see the village district up on the hill as just a red circle around another circle. And that's the interim water protection area that would have been established before they did any kind of hydrogeologic definition. And it's kind of the map we're talking about. If you go back to that and just take out that little circle, you've got the originally hydrogeologically delineated source protection area. That's all.
Thank you.
So does that mean we're in good shape in terms of protection of the, of the wells?
Yeah, the area is, is perfect. I can say it's perfect. It's hydrogeologically, you know, scientifically done as opposed to my taking a guess.
Right. And the wells that were abandoned for the village from Village Water Company, they, they can't play a role in aquifer protection and being backup wells, providing it as another source. And what I'm referring to is a conversation that Hadley's been having about acquiring land around some discontinued wells to make sure that they've got enough capacity for future events, not necessarily today. The, in terms of the Aqua Protection area, it's delineated. Can, can those decommissioned wells play a role in this?
Those.
And should we be seen?
Those three wells up there are rock wells and have very little production. They don't produce much water at all. So when it compares to the amount that we use from our wells down here by the river, they're just not feasible to use them.
Once they decommission, if they decommission them, once they decommission as a public water supply, that that's it. They go away to get them, reuse them again as a public water supply, you'd have to go through a new source approval process with DEP. They, they're, because they take them off the books.
So.
What I would say, what I'd like some assurance is that as much as you can with boundaries that could change based on different circumstances is that five years from now, we're not regretting we didn't protect those wells. That some, some, some events occur that those could, could have played a role, but we can't because we didn't in 2024, 23, take the, take the steps to put them in reserve.
I don't know what the district's doing with them. Wayne, do you know what they're doing with them?
I was. Well, they played over there.
Listen up.
Is somebody actually speaking or is that in someone's background?
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything.
I'm here.
Thank you, Julie.
Wayne's out at the pump house. I could see the green thing around him.
The pump's just being mined, so he might be hearing that.
So wait, I had a question. The question was, do we know what, what they're doing with the, we, we take over the district wells, they ours now because merged or they still separate?
No.
Wayne, your, your sound is coming through, I don't know, Voyager and, you know, kind of strange.
Under, under, something undersea, I think.
You have another microphone? Because wow.
Or maybe get off and log in again. I don't, well, or use the chat. I think though, my, my understanding is that they're just sitting there. But we could, we could find out from Nicholas.
The district will take control of the wells and they're supposed to decommission them. By decommission them, they'll most likely fill them with concrete so that they don't pollute what's, what little water is there.
Okay.
Decommission them, you take them out of use and just gone.
We can find out what the future plans for them are.
Like George, what George mentioned though, I mean, I understand what you're saying about having a reserve, but I remember coming to that system years and years ago and there was a real issue with water quality out of it as well as quantity, highly high amounts of manganese in that water. The Aqua for the, the hydrogeologic work that was done when the system was put together, which I, you know, got a good look at after I joined, you know, became a commissioner. It shows pump test stuff, which we're, that's why we're going to try to see if we can redevelop the smaller yielding well for more water because it shows that the yield of that Aqua could be considerably more than we're taking out.
Do you still have a copy or do you know where to find a copy of that study? Because we haven't been able to locate it.
That's where Wayne comes in. I, I remember seeing it, paperwork's been moved around in boxes. You know, so I don't know who's got it. I know George Ansel has the box. I got the box that was Paul Flureal's about the development stuff and there was a lot of, a lot of informative stuff in there. You know, there was a lot of work done to find those wells for this community. So.
Well, it sounds like one next step is to find out what's planned for those, for the district wells. And also that it's clear that the the water commissioners currently feel that if, if the backup well can be utilized or, or stay as the backup well, I guess, I'm not sure the terminology, that the current, that the original overlay district for that, for that area is adequate, is that right?
No, it's fine. And I don't see where it would change.
Okay.
The map that's on the screen right now, you take away the orange circle where the, uh, the wells are to the district and just keep the lines the way they are on there. That's it.
Okay. We had talked about it's time to go to the questions, Sarah.
Okay.
Grant left us with three questions that he thought were were the next steps. One thing that I, I think he perhaps didn't get quite right in his summary was that it was my understanding that the planning board had decided that we would like to commission another hydrological study. Partly because we thought that the situation might be different when you're relying on one well for the whole town. Also because of climate change and the fact that water flows and, and perhaps chemicals are different, the kinds of chemicals one worries about these days are different than, than they were 20 years ago. It sounds like the commissioners don't necessarily think that's that's advised or necessary. Anyway, I don't know about advisable.
I don't see why it would do it, but frankly, you know, don't forget that this water is tested constantly for contaminants. The new contaminants you read about are already being tested for.
I understand that. It's just different water flows, different rainfall patterns, different velocity of rainfall patterns. And as an amateur, I have no idea what those mean, but I know that everything else we do on the planning board to do with water is so outdated, the standards are so outdated that you, it's very difficult to design to evaluate projects and their drainage and and septic and the like, but. So anyway, the questions were, should we put it on hold till the status of a department backup well is finalized? And it sounds to me from everything that's been said that that would make sense. Not much point going to town meeting with a revision that we have to change shortly.
If, if in the course of the management of this water system over the next 10 years, if we, you know, redevelop that well, have more production, all that stuff will be integral and part of getting it all approved and getting it done. If there's any expansion or change to the protection area, those commissioners and the superintendent would bring it to your attention and to everybody's attention because we'd be seeking to change it.
I understand that. I, I guess it sounds like, I was assuming that this this evaluation of the backup well was fairly imminent. Is that not the case? I mean, I guess, when, when you expect to, to know whether another backup well will be needed or not, maybe that's the question.
Maybe a year after, surely soon. Since we can't, we talked to Wayne because he's.
Yeah. And then I guess at that point, then you'd have to start searching and then you need a hydrological study.
Well, we, we really, and that's why we're going to evaluate this one in the, the cost of finding another site to develop a public water supply is really not palatable to this, to us, this town. It's, it's, you're talking millions. It could be a lot of money. If we have a way to get more water out of the existing land that we own and use for water supply, then that's the obvious direction to go in. Until it's proven, you know, ineffective.
But that, that doesn't address, that doesn't include not decommissioning the water company wells. That's not part of this conversation.
No.
Is that correct?
Yeah, Wayne's nodding. And as far as I know, George.
I think it's true though, Tom, that the water supply from the department wells was adequate to cover the district at the time that those were established. They didn't have to, but as we can tell now that there's enough water there or capacity.
I'm sorry, George, I muted you for the dog. You know how to unmute?
Wayne, Wayne's self muting. George has been muted.
Sarah, can you unmute him or does he need to do it himself?
He has to do it himself. I can ask him to unmute, but George, it's down in your lower left corner. It'll say, uh, yeah. I don't even know what it says anymore.
Mute.
Mute. Hit where it says mute and it should unmute you.
I think we could stop screen sharing now, Sarah.
Good, because I can't find myself. Somewhere.
You know what I did to me?
George, do you see down in your lower left hand corner where there's a microphone? If you click on that, it'll go to green.
Do you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. We have two wells. The 12 inch well is our production well. The six inch, we use the six inch, but that was the original well that was put in back when the system was first built. What we'd like to do is do a pump test on a six inch well to determine how much more water we could get out of that six inch well. Right now, it's about, they're about 75 feet apart. So if we can take that six inch well and get more production out of it, that's good. Maybe we could drive a 12 inch well right beside the six inch well. We'd still be in the 400 foot radius for protection. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Thank you. Clarify what 400 foot radius for protection means for this layperson here?
Well, you can't do anything, when we originally put the wells in, DEP said that we had to have a 400 foot radius around the wells for protection.
I see.
You know, you can't fertilize the land, you can't do anything with the land.
Language in the, for the state and the feds is that you own or, or, or control 400 foot radius around your source, on your well. And that's no, nothing but water supply related activities there. Believe me, over across my career, I checked more moles and gas lines out of, out of pump houses. Because people would put the risk right where their well was, not realizing it, so. That won't change. It still, that's me that.
No, that's, it's one of the it's one of the zones, zones in the bylaw, Julie, you'll see, see it defined.
They would refer to zone one, two and three. One's a sanitary protective radius. Two is considered the area that recharges your wells and three is, is land that drains into that. Why this one, this delineation has is one area off in the northwest corner that is zone three and nothing else. I don't know, but I'm not hydrogeologist to find it.
Um, the other question Brad has is, is, I'll read it. Should the planning board proceed with a zoning map revision and redraw, that redraws the Aqua Prediction, Aqua for Protection District boundaries to match what is shown on the map we have just received from the water department? Is there an opinion about that? So that's what we were looking at. The yellow, orange dots are the 400 radius. The two on our map is the recharge area for wells, the two wells down on, like on the Hatfield border. And that area three, is that, is that for the water district in the middle of town?
Water district is in our zone three.
So our zone, okay, so we need to have a zone three and it happens to be where the wells from the district are.
You know, for, for water systems, for my purposes, as a commissioner, that's the least area of concern. You know, the, by layman's definition of the zone two, they'll call it the area of recharge areas, like a drop of water that gets into the Aqua for there is ending up in your well. You know, it's filtered, it's, you know, it's, you know, hopefully there's a lot of land there and the water's following an old channel from the Mill River that's buried under clay. So it's, it's what they call confined Aqua. It's an interesting source. It's a wonderful source, even though it has manganese and calcium problems we gotta deal with. But in the meantime, it's, it's a good source of water and it's apparently quite abundant and we can tap it for more, hopefully. As George says, we have to pump test to see if that, if it will produce that much down there.
So the water, the water district boundaries have subsumed the water company into, into the water district boundaries. Is that, is that accurate?
To some extent. Partially.
Pardon?
Well, there was some, there's some lines of the zoning, I don't have the zoning map in front of me, but there's some lines that were rectangle off and made the area a little bit larger up by the district wells in relation to the map that I'm looking at right now, the one you had up on the screen that Wayne showed you that was, just has the orange circle for the water district. Yeah. So I don't know where, I don't know, I personally don't remember how much bigger it was.
Well, it goes, it goes up to the to the north, to the northeast. Up into the hills as, as the as the zone, zone two for the, for the district wells is, is up there. And one of the problems we had was you couldn't just take away the, the district wells, the district zones because of the overlap with with the zone three from the department wells. And so having this map is a big help.
Right. That map just replaces the one you got in zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that work is done.
Evidently. And they, they feel the hy- hydrological study is adequate. And we it sounds like it's not going to be imminent. If, if the, if the, another backup well is needed, it's not going to be something that, that anybody knows about for some time. Or the location of it anywhere.
Well, hopefully, we're aiming to get the pump test done in 2024. And if that happens, we get some decisions, we'll know more by the end of the year, but there is money involved. We have to raise revenues.
So right now, we've established that, that map, we have found the map prior to the district. And that's what we were showing. And if we bring if that's the map we want to do for the revision of zoning, that will correctly protect where the wells and the possible, hopefully, the backup well will be.
Yes.
Okay.
I think this study was done originally when they, Kaufman and Richardson was an engineer that we employ or hired back in 86. And they did a lot of studies, you know, about where the ledge was under the ground and everything. What they did is they set off dynamite charges and they watched the reaction with sensors in the ground. And that's how they determined where they thought the water was coming from. And that's how they determined where they thought the water was coming from. So it, there was quite a bit of thought put into that drawing this map. It wasn't just somebody drawing lines.
Well, that's obvious looking at it. Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Maybe next time we have one, that'll be done by artificial intelligence. They'll send drones with sensors on it.
So for our questions, number one, we really shouldn't put it on hold because the timeframe of the possible backup is a year plus. So we should.
It's well beyond a year plus because
Yeah.
It's a year just to determine if, if you need to start looking. And then you have to look and then you have to do the study after you, after you find.
So we should have an updated map for the next, to vote on for the next annual town meeting. So that answers one, the first question. And the second question, if you all agree that these are the boundaries that correctly protect the geological area and the recharge area. And it kind of answers question number three. We really don't need a study uh, if the well reach, if the backup well issue comes, there's going to need to be a study. Correct?
There'll be analysis of some sort. Somebody's gonna look at it. Because anything you do, anything we do with the supply to increase usage, you've got to run it by DEP. And they will want information. They love information. So, you know, there is.
So what I'm seeing is that we should move forward with this found map to be the new revised zoning map provision. Tom and Judy?
I
Seems to be the case.
Seems to be the case.
And as new things come up with aquifer and the wells, we'll be seeing you folks again, huh?
Sure.
Well, we're gonna count on you to explain this to town meeting because I think it's always difficult to take away protections.
You're not really taking it away. You're just adjusting. It wasn't that much different area, I don't think, but.
Well, good. You, you keep making the case. You convinced us, hopefully, of the next town meeting.
Well, in terms, you know, again, if you were gonna keep those, as the gentleman mentioned, if we're gonna keep the, the district wells, it'll just, fill the district wells as backups and use them. No, that wouldn't change anything.
Yeah, well, we, we.
Said practically, practically, as system managers, I don't see why we would keep those when we've got a better supply where we are and all the hardware that we need and all that. You still have to treat that water up there if you're pulling out.
Yeah.
And it sounds like it's not the capacity.
It really helps.
Well, thank you very much. I think you've, you've been a huge help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go have some pizza.
Good. We're jealous.
Thanks. I appreciate being able to partake in this and I'm gonna leave now too.
Bye.
Can we consider we took a formal vote? I think we all agreed.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna have to vote on it to bring it before the to put it on.
You have to have a public hearing and everything, yeah.
Okay. We'll be voting on this lots. Sorry about the intruder.
Just getting even once the dogs left.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, um the rest is updates. The exit thirty five study committee is me. Um, and I hope Sylvie will pipe in if I get bogged down or too discouraged, um. If you remember, this is a group that is supposed to study how to revitalize or, or get, I guess that's the wrong term. Improve foot traffic and commercial activity in the in the area around the Sugarloaf shops and the diner and that area. And I'd hoped we'd have a diagram to show you tonight, but the consultant hasn't come forward with the last set of plans yet, um.
I, I did ask him for those, but I haven't seen them just yet, the presentation that he gave us.
Thank you. Um, we, we've had three meetings. Four, maybe? Four. Um, I find the progress to be very painfully slow. And the consultant not overly helpful, but that's personal opinion. This, the area is difficult. Too many state roads uh, to build up over I ninety one, making lots low wetlands, um. And what the group has talked about is having a gateway area and re, rezoning so that hopefully maybe, I'm, I guess I'm the one that's pushing it hardest, but mixed use residential zoning in that area, which is also something the housing production plan recommended. Um, it would be commercial activity on the first floor and um house, housing above, maybe with some design standards. The consultant is talking about a I don't know, a street, I don't have, I don't have a word for it, Sylvia, pedestrian mall maybe or something, or a village-like street area down on the old state road down past where the dentist is and down there to the Deerfield line. He was not able to answer questions about parking um, or traffic. And um and I, I know traffic is a concern of this committee. I looked at the street and a lot of it is above, great. I'm sorry, Tom.
Where, where's there enough land, contiguous piece of land in acreage that something like this could be done? It seems like such a fragmented area interspersed with um, wetlands.
Yeah, well, we're talking behind the Sugarloaf shops and, and rezoning that area of small houses and small businesses. So it's an existing use area that hopefully would evolve with different zoning. But there's, there's a matter of transition. There's a matter of whether it's feasible. I mean, turns out one of the lots was a brownfield site. And we don't know if it's hazardous. So there are a lot of
Old Fox was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, they had phase one cleanup, but not phase two, I gather. So, but one reason I wanted to mention it is because I would like to push for, for the for the mixed use residential to be something that we keep on our agenda for, or our list to consider for town meeting this year, especially since it was in the housing production plan report too. Although it's not one that they prioritize, but I, I do think it's one of the more promising ones. So. So I don't know whether anybody, whether the group will wind up recommending or not, but it's something I think we should be thinking about.
Judy, did you have a chance to dust off the, the master plan that had the mixed use residential for, on Christian Lane?
No, I didn't, um. We talked about it for the housing production plan and I mean, one, one thing that's happened there since then is three or four of those, or two or three of those parcels are now under APR, so it became a little less I think what, three, maybe? I don't know, um. So that's, it's a little less enticing as an area than it was then, but it might still be something worth looking at. Sylvie, maybe you could find that, might be. Could you add that to your list, Sylvie? I don't know whether it was
Sure, you said, um.
Your master plan. I'm not sure whether it was that or preliminary.
We did, I know it was part of the master plan that I worked on ages ago.
Okay, and like something that Nicholas and I were on re-recommended it, I would say around two thousand seven or so, but.
The, the idea was that um, you have the fire department there, you have the, the, the town, the town, town, the a department of public works there. It could be anchors, you had the police station there. And then you, those become anchor village, small village anchors. Um, New England small village anchors for a mixed use district.
Well, you know
And you said this would be a
Christian Lane between, between uh, five and ten and Long Plain Road.
But I mean, would, would that same concept apply to the um, one sixteen um root, root five corridor there? It's just a resource, it might be, I, I forget what the details are. Might be a resource that um, say some time developing other, and reinventing the wheel.
Thank you. Good, good thing.
I did, I've heard rumor, but I think it's pretty solid and somebody probably has more definite information, um. I thought Roberts is, and the diner is having some pretty serious renovations there, is what I heard.
Well, I have heard that they want to move the diner.
Right, because they're gonna put in much better bathroom facilities and a better store, particularly to attract truckers.
That's interesting.
And it's part of the it's part of the, there's a lot of, lot of activity like that going on at these truck stops. Um, and building and making them more friendly for EV vehicles, electric vehicles charging stations. And while you have people waiting to charge their car, you go in and have some food, you go buy, buy things and develop them into small commercial centers. There was just an article, I think, today in the Times, talking about that. And I think that's what Roberts is pursuing.
There isn't really one in this area. There's farther south. But that's, so that's what I've heard, particularly the bathrooms are need some serious updating to attract those people, the people who are, need overnights and need better facilities for long term.
So the two sets of people, the, the truckers and the Tesla drivers.
Yeah. And that's what they're, that's what they're trying to do.
Or no, beer. Okay.
Wine, wine.
Wine. Hit all the, hit all the stereotypes right out of me, right?
So it's going slow, Judy. That's the message?
Yeah. It's, I, to be fair to the consultant, it's a, it's a pretty impossible site to work with.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's very, very limited area there.
It's limited. It's very constrained and very limited.
And wet.
Very.
Yes. Yeah, I think everybody started by thinking that lot south of the diner was, was, could, was developable and Scott Jackson says no, so. And he wrote the book.
The people who wanted to put in the self-storage kept bumping into this one there. We looked at proposals of self-storage that didn't get off the ground because of the wetness.
He said he reviewed something like, I don't know, fifteen proposals over the years and I mean, he actually came to our meeting and to, to tell the, tell the guy not to don't bother with any expenses on this. You're not gonna get through.
The latest marijuana one was a very I was very entertained by that meeting.
You've missed some interesting ones, Sylvie. So then do we need to do any, I, I don't think there's any more on that. It's, it's slow. But anyway, keep, keep that in mind.
Thank you, Judy.
Housing production plan update, um. Brad did. Basically said that the production plan had been approved. It's been sent to sent to the state. Um, the housing committee has met and there are consensus on on, um. It doesn't say that necessarily that it's zoning things, but they've reached consensus on two priority areas. Reduce spare areas to accessory apartments. And incentive provides affordable housing units. Sylvie, did you sit in on this meeting? Can you?
Sorry, my screen got all funny. Um, the, the housing production meeting?
Yeah, the housing committee meeting since then, when he summarized it.
I didn't. Um, I attended the one before last, but I wasn't able to make the, the very last meeting they had.
Okay. Well, it sounds like they're gonna recommend um, that we consider changes to the accessory apartment bylaw. And I don't know about incentivize. It sounds like they didn't have specific recommendations for, for quote incentivizing affordable housing. I had suggested to them a a bylaw change that was modeled after the repurposing of historical buildings, ones where would allow um a lot that didn't meet the regular dimensional standards for housing to be used with a special permit approval by the CBA. If, if they um certified it or deeded it to be an accessory housing. Which I think would, would be fairly effective and weighty, but I guess we should wait and see what they recommend to us.
My takeaway from the preliminary thing is there was a lot of um recommendations for different boards of actions. So is there some homework we need to be, that was prioritized for us so we can get that into our long-term agenda?
Well, there was a list of bylaws to change, um, and one of them and one of them was make all the lots smaller or make lots smaller and AGRAS one, um, another was allow accessory apartments by right, allow them to be bigger, um, that kind of thing. It was a long enough list that I think it sounds like they're coming back with some recommendations. I maybe we should edit some of future meeting. Sit down and see if we have priorities.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it just seemed like that. There was a lot we could, we needed to pick what we could do to help in what our priorities were.
Yeah. But I think it should be when Brad is here because he's the housing committee representative.
Definitely.
And it's also an excuse to postpone doing it.
Yep. Good.
And then I had the resource replacement fee on the agenda just because I didn't know what was happening with it. And I know that Sylvie, and this is a place we need you again, um.
Yep, I'm here.
If I don't, I've been CCing you on these, these memos, but this is something that we put in the solar bylaw that if, if uh a large solar facility uses land in chapter they then have to pay a resource replacement fee as compensation and the money goes into the to the community preservation open space bucket. And the bylaw requires that the select board recalculate. And the bylaw requires that the select board recalculate, that this be recalculated every year and the select board do it based on changes in assessments. And I don't think it's been done, but I, I'm not sure about that.
Um, yeah, I can certainly check on that, um.
I know that Cynthia produced-
I feel like I'm-
Cynthia produced the numbers.
Hmm.
Or at least the assessments, I don't think she did, she, she produced the inputs, but she didn't produce the final number. And I think you, you or Brian should have the formula that was used.
Yeah, that does sound familiar, so, um, yeah, I'll check up on that.
Yeah, because somehow this has to get on the calendar, so the select board does this every year when the assessments are available.
Okay. So we need the final numbers and we need it on the calendar so it can be approved for this year?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody comes and wants to build it, it should have been voted before they, I mean, should really be, be be, uh, uh, done as soon as the the new assessments are out for the year, or at least, or I guess it's partly the when the state releases the changes in chapter values, it's the difference between the market value and the actual assessment value based on the state's s- state's valuation for acreage under chapter.
Okay. Alright, I will, um, I will make that the priority to, to get that sorted.
Thank you. And one other thing, um, the solar plan, draft plan came out recently and I think it was circulate, Mary circulated it. It's long, but it's good, but one thing that they recommended that we should have thought of, we, we've been saying, oh, there should be more canopies over parking lots. They think that the height limitation i- in our solar bylaw might preclude those. So we should investigate that, I think, and add it to our um. See if that's a problem. I know when we wrote that, we didn't, never envisioned canopies.
So what action do we need to take on that, Judy? Putting it on the agenda to vote, or?
I think we need to investigate what the height of these canopies really is.
Okay.
Um, which shouldn't be too hard.
The, um, River Valley Market in East Hampton just put one up, so then they probably have old specs.
Yeah, and well, I'm sure somebody probably Furco could tell us, or, or.
This study was done with UMass, and boy, UMass has many, many of them overparking.
Yeah, well, maybe we could just ask what they, what they think the, yeah, that's probably.
I could, um, email our consultant to, uh, we've been working with on the plan and ask her for some data on that.
Yeah, that would be helpful. And then I guess the thing is whether we change the height limit or just put in, uh, add a phrase to the bylaw that says it doesn't apply to whatever the technical term for canopies is.
Okay, because we have ours lower, so they're not as intrusive.
Yeah.
Versus they would need to be higher if they were on a parking lot.
Yeah, so hopefully ours are hot, we're supposed to be high enough so that so that you could do dual use and have farming under them, but but I notice up at the, up at the jail up in Greenfield, they're, they're pretty tall, theirs are anyway.
And I mean, there's all kinds of vehicles that UMass that park under those, so you have to have clearance probably for a good pickup truck that's lifted and ha- is like a three fifty, so a very large pickup truck or van. Yep. Yeah, yeah, so those specs should be somewhere at UMass.
Well, these consultants seem to be very good, so, so, um.
Excellent. Okay, so that'll be getting that information and then we can examine our own bylaw, see what we need.
I think we're sort of slowly making a list of bylaw changes, it's gonna be another fun town meeting. Should we go on to minutes?
Oh, good.
Start with submission date, I sent some around, um, after our July meeting.
Yeah, let's do that one.
Which of course are brilliant, but.
Of course. What's, what's the date on that one?
July thirteenth.
Twelfth.
Twelfth.
Well, they've probably sent on the third one.
Okay, right. The title of the document is PB Draft Minutes seven thirteen twenty-three, but the meeting was on the twelfth. Hi. Is it this one? There was a duplicate word.
Brant did some edits. But they didn't show up on the on OneDrive and I didn't do a comparison.
And I didn't, no. No, it was on the twenty-ninth meetings, there was something that was was it that one? It's not that important, it was just no, I will vote to approve the July twelfth minutes as amended.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
And are the only other minutes we had from March, or did we have some others that Mary had gotten us?
I think these are the only ones.
So the March twenty-ninth ones?
Yeah.
March twenty-nine.
So where the highlights are for the text related to verification inspection requirements to be determined?
Hey.
Sorry?
That was the way, that was the way the document they sent.
Okay. Gotcha.
And as it turned out, they never they never wanted to do that, which is one reason we voted not to recommend it. Well, I sent some changes.
And I propose accepting the March twenty, do you have anything, any changes, Tom?
N- no. I'm just no.
It's lacking the documentation of the
Yeah.
Of the files. So we could vote it subject to that being completed.
Yeah, you have some very good revisions and yeah, there's a lot of
Had a couple of questions too, but I think
Yeah.
I mean, one of them was just take out all this text that is really should be just in the file.
Yeah.
Which we said before, so I'm not quite sure why she did it again, but.
Yes, I recommend approving them with Julie's juice, God, Judy's, um, revisions and pending the questions being answered.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Stick.
Okay. Next meeting, anything else? Must be that Don talks all the time.
Yeah, it's definitely Don.
I he wasn't at the last meeting either, was he, Don?
No, I don't think he was.
Yeah. I chased him down on one.
Let's not go too far into this till we record.
Are we? Are we?
Uh, let's set the next meeting and adjourn and then discuss.
Good. It'd be great if it wasn't on the set date, but um. Because I think I have someone in town, but I think we're okay.
October, last week of October.
Which is like the twenty-sixth is when, we don't need, right now, we don't need to schedule anything else before October twenty-fifth?
I'm, I'm out of town on, for a week starting the twenty-sixth.
Is that what you want to do the week, the night before you're out of town, or you want to see if we can move this up to the eighteenth?
Eighteenth would be more.
I'll be away on the eighteen.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth may be hard for me too, I have, I think I have someone visiting that evening.
What about the twenty-fourth? The old date.
Right, but who, who is, uh, on, who's on Tuesday night, select board took over Tuesdays?
Be hard, Sylvie, but I think the rest of us could do it, probably.
Um, I think that I can, uh, I can manage Tuesday, I'm sure I can figure something out with that.
Um, they only meet every, they might, they probably don't meet on the last Tuesday anyway. Let's see if, if Brant can do it.
The twenty-four, the, actually, the thirty-first is a Tuesday, so it's the second to the last Tuesday, but let's run, yeah, let's run, um, run this by Brant and Dawn. So tentatively for the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Okay, I will.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn and shut off the recording. And.